It's a record starting fine. Thank you, sir.
Good evening to all of you. Today could be a short session. We don't know, but not much to talk because the topic is little generic. We know it's a logical conclusion of all that we have discussed. Called summary and conclusion chapter. A small one or two minutes about the acknowledgements. Then we will be talking about the citations later. And then, you know, we will have a subject seminar. I will tell you about that little later. Then there is, there are two more sessions called sampling design. Where you will be, you know, exposed to kind of different kinds of samples, sample designs, very common sample designs and small problem working out of each type of sample, sampling procedure. And then there is a good chapter called testing of hypothesis. And once the testing of hypothesis is done, we can optionally have a small discussion on report writing, scientific report writing, but I wouldn't advise the discussion on scientific report writing now because you're all starters, you know, report writing comes at the end. I just give you a small kind of generic inputs and I will have a detailed, you know, technical writing sessions. Maybe after, after eight months or a year when you have finished your coursework and also halfway through your results. It is at that time, the, you know, report writing becomes very relevant. If I teach everything now, you know, possibly you may forget it, forget. So whatever that is needed for the exam, maybe I will teach now. But actual applications, actual delineation of, that is nitty gritty, I will be talking quite, quite later in your journey through PhD. Now today, we will talk on what is called a small chapter called summary and conclusions. Please recall that, you know, we have had a very lengthy elaborate discussions on meaning, definition, hypothesis, objectives for our problem statement. Then research designs, we had material methods and then discussion. Now in a logical sequence, we have gone as if you know, chapter by chapter, this is how you delineate in your dissertation or thesis as well. I did not go random, but I went very methodical so that you know, it becomes easy for you to also stitch all that whatever that we have learned, follow the same thing when you write your thesis. So in a way, we have discussed about very, in a cursory manner, the structure of your thesis also. And we also have deliberated upon techniques of, that is what we should do, what should be the benchmarks, what should be the quality criteria, what should be the kind of what's called best thing that you can do if review of literature chapter was that, what should be the best layout, ingredients that makes a good review of literature and what should be the deliverable deliverable at that point in time, a publication, right? So we went in all, you know, sincere and earnestness. Each chapter, although in bravity, it's, it can never be complete entire thing, but it is enough to create or invoke interest in you and develop further inputs as and when you pass, go through that particular stage or that particular work or step in research methodology. Summary, conclusion and recommendation. Three small activities that comes out as a logical ending of a big task of completion of fulfillment of objectives or you have got the answer now for the research question or the hypothesis. Now you will conclude, first you will summarize, you will conclude and recommend. Please understand, there will be nothing new in this chapter. You see, in discussion also, there is nothing new. What you found, you are going on taking stand by stand and explaining. Eliciting, discussing. Right? So there is always in research, there is overlap, there is always reiteration, there is always a link from one step to the other step. And this is the last link. Which evidently is captioned as summarizing, concluding and recommending. In fact, if you read through this, I have done the work. I am just completing the work and I am eliciting what I found in a summarized way. For the benefit of those people who may not be interested in letter to letter or sentence to sentence reading of the entire chapters or whole content of my dissertation. Please, the reality is, please understand, your dissertation will only be read by you. Perhaps you were evaluators or examiners thoroughly because with scrutiny. Because you are the author, you will have to be thorough, you will have to scrutinize, you will have to draft, redraft, draft, redraft. Many drafts would arise at each step, so you would have seen it thoroughly. Your guide would have seen it thoroughly. Your reviewers, that is examiners would have, would see it thoroughly. So handful, only ten to fifteen people perhaps would have gone through sentence by sentence and also you know, because of their very nature of evaluation, they will have to go through so scrupulously and with lot of scrutiny, close examination would be done. So you will have to satisfy those people because there are requirements. It is extremely important. See anything, and there is an orderly fashion also, there is an orderly way to depict also each chapter which we have roughly learnt about those nitty gritties. Now we have to reiterate because this chapter is not meant for those reviewers, please remember. This is not for the guide, this is not for the candidate at all. This chapter is for those selective few people who would, you know, do some review of literature. Taking the source as your thesis because many thesis also people would read and in the thesis also, all the chapters will not be read. Summary conclusion, if it is very near to their problem choice, then they will go through the chapter in detail. So we will have to keep that in mind that this chapter should encompass all the highlights but in a very summarized manner. Now, there are very, very explicit meanings also we should remember. Many people call it as summary, conclusion. Many people call it as inferences, many people call it as findings, many people, you know, there are many, many words. But in research parlance, summary conclusions and recommendations become, become the raw material for executive summary. In other words, it's called abstract. Executive abstract, that means executive means actionable, executable. You have executed and you are giving an executive summary or kind of, what should I say, an abstract. Which will be of one or two pages, that will be in the front or the first portion of your dissertation. Abstractions, that also will be there. Abstractions are summary of summaries, summary of conclusion chapter will be there. This could be some, say five to ten pages. But this five to ten pages becomes the raw material for writing, even executive abstract. So there is always a link and there is always a source material to create some other thing. But at the same time, two things should not be duplicated. They have got to be original, they have got to be kind of what serving the purpose what it is meant for. Now, the word summary is summarize the complete work. In other words, it is you know, I should say the last two or three sentences are last paragraphs of each chapter. Starting from how you conceived the problem till how you crack, I mean identified the problem and how you found a solution for the problem. So summarizing is in entirety, not giving the complete details but giving the intent so that the content is to be read, that is what is important. The intent of summary is the creation of an interest for the person who is reading to lay hands on the chapters individually, please remember, that is the intention. Summary is not for you, this is never for you, it is for always others. Because hitherto, all the chapters were for you. This particular chapter is for the others and others have to get that curiosity invoked. Why I am telling this is because many people write mechanically, repeat the same sentence, cut and paste from the body of the essay and paste it here. That is not a good idea because the intention is to create interest and you will have to make it little readable. In other words, here, I should use the word, a journalistic language is used. What is the realistic language? If the paragraph in a body is of about ten sentences, the journalistic language will have the ten sentences divided into five paragraphs. Are you kidding me? So it is very important that these paragraphs should be crisp, straight, clear and straight going to the head. That is the points have to go to the head. That brevity should be there and paragraph should be very, very small, not more than two or three sentences. Whereas normal paragraph will be eight to ten sentences. Some people would have a passion of writing very long paragraphs, that is not encouraged. Many people, you know, resort to that to show little, you know, what should I say? Literacy, literary or flavor argument, that is not warranted here. But paragraph of eight to ten sentences are very, very common. But in summary, the paragraphs will be not more than two or three sentences. And in other words, I should say punchlines, what you want to tell, epitomize present in brief, that is the intent of summary. Now what is conclusion, summary is the entire work. The conclusion is what you derive and what you would like. You know, conclusions are your own. Summary is the entire work, right? You know, entire work. Conclusion is what you conclude, what you want your reader to get the point. You know, in other words, it is a summary of the long summary. You know, two, three sentences paragraph still less in conclusion. So it will be five to six bullets or maximum of half a page or maximum of one page. If summary is five to ten pages, the conclusion will be maybe half a page or a one, one page. So that is, so here more of the grammar, English, journalistic thing, punchlines. You know, but not beyond fact, it is only, it should be only facts, not repetitive. This is all the characteristic of summary conclusion. And of course, many people argue that recommendation should not be given. I also feel that personally suggestions would have been good, but nevertheless, suggestions, recommendations, you know, suggestions get fractified or ripened into recommendations once you become more expert and you yourself become a little more concrete and solidified to tell this, I recommend this, so that comes out of little experience. However, you are in a stage now to recommend because recommend few things basing on the conclusions that you have drawn. Recommendations are generally not what you found, what you intend to do if given a chance for you to continue, please remember, that is the intention of recommendation. If you yourself want to continue because of the constraints that you have experienced at every stage, constraint of observations, constraint of experiments, constraint of time, constraint of finance, constraint of so many things, prerequisites are completed, but you are not able to do though you wanted to do. And that could be kind of what is called recommendations. Recommendations is generally what if given a chance, what is the logical progression, logical progression. Because you are able to suggest, you are able to continue the work because you found there is lot of thing to do. In research, that's what happens, you know. We start with some getting satisfaction, but we never be satisfied. But in the process, we would have done lot of creative work and also contributed to science. So please remember, this particular chapter should be as brief as possible. Conclusions are the findings that you have found summarized and you have given you know, discrete points and recommendations are very few, suggestions are few. And summary is little elaborate because maybe eighty to hundred minutes, you will have to summarize. There is no need to summarize reviewing of literature. Generally, review of literature summarization, we have done because we have already published review article. Review article itself is the summary of the review of literature chapter which is little lengthy and also could have taken lot of time and effort. That is as a planning tool, as a planning tool, when you want to plan the things, you did that. So that is not to be included in summary. However, all the other chapters, like for example, starting off with research question, hypothesis, objectives. And also your research, research, research designs that you have chosen, methods that you have used. The each and every experiment you have done and observations you have, that are got to be summarized. That is all those that have to be summarized, including the complete, the end portion of what is called your discussion chapter as well. So that becomes the material for summary. And based on that, what is the highlighting, striking thing becomes conclusions. Conclusions generally are that yes, to this extent, my research question is answered. This extent, the answer was not there and it is good that we do it logically further. Right? That is, that should be the conclusion. Let us see point by point, what is that real content? It is a brief statement of the main findings presented under each factor. You see, you will have to be very prudent here. What are the main findings? What are the sub findings? Small findings will be plenty, but main findings is those that is pointed towards your objectives. One, two, three or four objectives you would have got, no? That is main findings. And whatever you have found, that is not present in the objective is called sub findings, they are incidental findings, they are co-finding. However, they are findings. So you will have to delineate what is objective and how the findings have come, findings completely related to objectives become important, they are main findings, they are called main findings. You are supposed to get it, till you get it, you cannot move on. You are supposed to get it. So that things have to be mandatorily highlighted. Many people get lost, you know, they don't read the objective and hypothesis, they forget it. And start writing whatever they have got incidentally, which will not talk anything, it will not gain a focus at all, there is no linkage at all. So it is important that you keep two things ahead. Before you are table, when you write summary conclusions, one hypothesis, two objectives. It is extremely important, all that you have, you have promised to do has to be answered here, answered here. That is, that they are called main, main findings. Related to them, whatever we have found, it is main findings. Presented under each factor, each factor here is that objective. The conclusion is also an interpretation of the facts you gathered and discussed. You see, interpretation is out of discussion. You propose a kind line of argument. Many others also have proposed lines of argument, you integrate them and make it your own because yours should be front, others should be backing up and that is what is, it's like a commentary. Interpretation is your way of solving the problem, you have solved. And how you solved, you tell, the method of solving, you will tell. That is what is interpretation. In other words, you get for example eighty percent recovery in a eighty percent extract, you recovery where you put hundred ml of ethanol and got eighty ml of ethanol. You will have to interpret, why did you lose twenty? You know, that is what is called interpretation. Because you, it is, it is to be very, very logical of what you lost and it should be the factual thing and it should be quantifiable thing. Interpretation is always in the light of what you got. What you got, that is, that is what, that is where the creation comes. And you interpret because there are some obvious reasons. You know, ideal conditions would not have been kept, so the operation of the solvent would have happened at the room temperature. Or the air current was bigger, you know, some kind of attribution is extremely important for that actual loss, some kind of attribution is extremely important. And if you got hundred percent, yes, you tell you got hundred percent, then the conditions were ideal, we can understand. So interpretation becomes extremely important of the facts. Facts are always numerical in number, they are, they are, they are numbers. They are, and interpretation is the comment that you give in sentences. One is the number, the other one is the sentence. Please understand. So facts will give you, for example, you got the relationship between the dependent and independent variable was value that is significant value is less than zero point five. Less than zero point five is the fact that you got, that's a deduced thing. So everybody will understand in the result chapter, you get only facts. But in this discussion chapter, it will be a finding, you found that is significant. The relationship was significant, that you write, there you don't write. You may mention zero point zero five in the results, but in discussion, you will tell it is significant, you know. In the result chapter, you don't write significant, you write only P is equal to less than zero point zero five. But in interpretation, discussion section, you write in sentence. That sentence have got to be pulled out and put it in the, put in the conclusion, put in the conclusion. This is extremely important, no? It's all very, very scientific, very well, very, very well directed sentences. Whatever that you have got, you will have to interpret both in sentence form and also facts. That is the figurative form. It is not a repetition of the facts. Here, you take a kind of what is called evaluation of your own work. You are an evaluator of your work, so you evaluate and give a kind of, I should say in inverted commas, a philosophical touch, telling that it is derived from out of hard facts. But that is true, that is true. So a kind of what is called every conclusion sentences should have got to be based on facts, but appealing to read, appealing to read, read. No controversy, there can be no controversy here. Creation of curiosity is okay, but no controversy. When you are doubtful, please don't conclude because that is a that is a chapter for limitations and also further scope if you are doubtful. Right? You can't say ambiguous statements in conclusion, it is always concrete statements in conclusion. What you found, what you are sure, what you can confident, that only comes in conclusion. It is not action that one must take. Although the last portion, that is recommendation, is, could be a kind of instructive type. But conclusion is never that, summary is not that because you did not do your work to recommend, is it that? Recommendation was not the intention. Recommendation is a spin-off incidental thing that has arrived, that has evolved over your summary and conclusion. So you should be very clear about it. So it is not an act, you are not suggesting any action. You are just depicting what happened. This is where the journalistic things will come, it is that is kind of descriptive research type of things will come back here because you did a small work, you did a small, I should say created an accident and you are reporting accident yourself. So it is reporting here, gets the prominence and you are not you know, recommending or you are not actually giving kind of what's called any action to be taken or addressing any regulatory authority or criticizing anybody. Right? So that is not the role that you should take, it is not criticism here. It is kind of what is called a kind of conclusion here, concluding thing. Now summary is, the summary section may be the conclusion of your work. Summary section is conclusion of the work. Because there is a committed work, there is a timeline. Within that timeline, you have done the work and you are concluding what you got. Summarizes the findings and conclusion. Ultimate takeaway message, so as brief as possible. Reflecting future work and also reflecting future work is nothing but for example, recommendation or suggestion. And very little about limitation because limitations will be elaborating in discussion chapter. But here it will be just a snapshot, a snapshot. What's the purpose of conclusion? Tying together, integrating, synthesizing the various issues. You must remember when I started in the beginning. The first thing is in research analysis, breaking down and examining each part. And finally synthesizing. So both the things will give kind of what is called understanding and also learning. While analysis gives learning, the synthesis gives you, gives you an edge to tell why this particular is figured out, how this was figured out and what could be the future, logical future, you know, that is how it should run. Provide answers to the research questions extremely important, never forget this, keep that with you in front when you write conclusion. What were the research questions, what were the research hypotheses? What was the problem statement that you committed, you wanted to do, all those things have to come here. In that front only, you will have to answer and you will have to conclude. Identify the theoretical implications of the study. In other words, what's the meaning of implication here? Your contribution to or your effect of work on others, on other or related work. Implication is always what you wanted, you got it and what it is likely to get if it is applied to somebody else. Like generalistic or generalization aspect would come and that is more important to me. So how your contribution can help, you know, can help. That is what is implication. Can help not only you for your further activities or further proposals of your own work or say somebody else's or some, some related disciplines work. See, let me give you an example of an implication here. Implication is, one, you are convinced that you have done work and you have done a creative work. Now that creation, how does it fit in the gamut of complete literature, scientific literature? Can it be applied? You may be working in computer science, but your contribution definitely there will be an implication on computer science, but what would be, can it apply to biology? Can it apply to say for example astronomy? Can it be applicable to physics? Why don't you explore? If there is some kind of rare hope, give, give that implication. Because that you could not predict when you conceived or when you hypothesized. But now, does it imply, does it imply? Implication is something has a direct or indirect loose or strong bearing on yours that is understood on others, other disciplines is more important. So that is, that is what is called implication. Exercision of influence is implication. Highlights of the study and limitations, important, mandatory, but in, I should say, telegraphic language. Highlights of the study and limitations, important, mandatory, but in, I should say telegraphic language. Language is very critical in summary conclusion, very critical, not easy to epitomize, very easy to explain. But not easy to define, please remember, definitions are always very crisp. And in definitions, you will never repeat the same thing. Suppose if I say, uh what is a gene? You should not, never use the word gene in your explanation of definition words. A gene is a gene, you should never say, many people mistake that, you know, if I say what is. Philosophical work, philosophy is that philosophy, no, you can't use that word philosophy again, right? So very important is, definition should have very. Calculated weighed amount of words, this weighing becomes important, we say in chemistry. The words of summary conclusion, single pan balance. Generally balances will have two pans, but this is a single pan balance which is more accurate and gives straight away. What is the quality, right? So. Language of summary conclusion is extremely important, many people ignore, many people do not know. Because just because they have come to the end of the things, they are tired. They write here and there are cut and paste some chapters, sentences and fill up and finish because of the necessity, no. This is what is mostly read, please remember, it is not, it may not be for by you, it will be read by so many people. Uh who are related and who can, you know, benefit later on, so you are helping all those people. With that intention, you should write summary conclusion, provide direction. And areas of future research, because that is real, real contribution that you can help, that you can do. Because you you need not make others to perspire as much you have perspired, you know, as much you have strived. So make others' life as easy as possible, help them, that is there. And we have also derived so many things, so many help from others, so it becomes a kind of direction provider. Conclusion is a direction provider. This direction is not necessarily for others. This direction is also for yourself to continue, to continue. So in that uh perspective, you should write the uh conclusion. Succinctly summarize implications, see these are very important words. All the three are very important, succinctly means interestingly, but brave with brevity. Summarize, don't leave anything, include everything, but with small sentences. And how influential it is to others and also to your area. This is succinctly summarize implications. See, when you write sentences, when you write words, do not. Just read yourself and try to answer and try to defend each word what you have written. Then there is a big meaning in your thesis, that is why, you see, thesis should never run into. Five hundred, six hundred pages, that means it is only built up. I should say many times, I should say bad word called fabrication, which we will talk a little later, that fabrication is unwarranted. In in many European universities, now they have discontinued writing dissertations, because. Many people think that stitching a good flat, uh you know, volume is actually the. Uh intention of thesis, no, they will just take four or five publications they have done. Pin them up and then submit, Europe, Europe, there are certain universities which are class universities. They don't want all this blah blah, you know, but we are, we follow more of, I should say. Uh uh collo, I mean, uh British uh type of convention. So we insist that six copies, that fat, this fat, this font, this, all we are, all we do that. But it is okay, but then actually most important is the substance here, not. It is the content, not the container, please remember, it is the content. And in conclusion, I should say it is a distilled point, you can have thousands of liters of raw material, but distillation, distillate. Will be few M L, no, that is important. No sweeping statements. I told you journalistic language, journal only for the construction, not the sensationalization. Nothing untoward thing has to come, sensationalization has no place in scientific research, whereas curiosity has. Curiosity, inquiry, spirit of inquiry, fair enough, but no sensationalism, sensationalism is some cladding up. Something making it more, you know, without any rational, you know, making it sensational, right? That is not the intent. Journalistic word I use because of the brevity, paragraph should be very small, you see in paragraph, in in. Take a newspaper and read, no paragraph will be more than two or three sentences, please remember. But there is a meaning there, because people should get, you know, points. So that is the meaning and that is why I use the word journalistic, not in letter and spirit there, it is kind of what is called. Inside the curiosity, so that people will hold on and read further in uh further to understand more. Present the bottom line message, that is, I told you the, you know, the last sentences of. Each paragraph of the discussion chapter, that is what is actually the content here, point, value described in study. You know what is value, I should again tell you here, what is a value? A value is that thing which will help you, help others, here the other is the reader. The value is that particular thing which will always, you know. Uh is emulated, you are happy about it, so you are happy about your finding and make. That happiness or give that happiness or share that happiness to others, that is what is the meant of meaning of value here. Described in the study, tell the reader what they should take away, to what they should, that is take home points. Now advantages you should tell, you know, if you want, you know, our style is actually the checklist, is it not? So keep this checklist, see whether advantages uh you have highlighted. Novelty you have covered, limitations you have included, suggestions you have made. Suggestions is a good word, I don't recommend using the word recommendations, suggestions, so. At this point in time, let us not argue, what is, why we should not recommend, but it is always suggestions would be better. This is the summary of summary conclusion uh the chapter. Restate the research questions so that it gives a cue, it gives a context. People cannot, you know, people who read exclusively this chapter, they should get what was your research question, so you reiterate it. Empirical findings, that is things that has come out of your hard experiments. That is what is called empirical findings. Theoretical implication for your. Uh area for others' area, recommendation of the future research for yourself and for others. Limitations is a defending statements for why you did not get. And what should be done to get it, you know, that is what is called limitations. So this is extremely important. In recommendations, they are developed conclusions, you know, you give uh some cladding, you give some kind of. Hope, you give some kind of logical progression, one is logical inclusion, this is logical progression. So to progress, you recommend, to develop, you recommend, that is what is the intent here. Recommendation is suggested action to take based on the conclusions. Based on the conclusions, conclusions were based on the findings. Findings was derived from the experiments, experiments were derived from the data, data is always. A son or a daughter of an experiment, please remember, the word data means. You have done an experiment and you have got an observation point, data is not just available there. Secondary things, somebody else's have done and we have borrowed it, but the word, whenever you use the word data. Please think it has come out of an experiment, there is no other meaning for data. That is why we call it as an observation point. Observation point means what? Somebody have designed an experiment, done work and got some result. That is the sacred, uh this one of what is called data. So now, data we have seen, decisions we are to take, now data to decision is what is called. Data to decision, data is proof, experience. Uh hard finding that you put it in what is called to action, to action. So data to decision is what is called recommendation. The suggested action should be explicit, that cannot be, your suggested action cannot be ten pages, right? No, that is why I, 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 I am not very, very happy with the. These particular recommendations at all, because we are not in that stage of recommending, we have learned it, but it is. We have included this for ease of completion of all the steps of research, right? But this is not the end serving point, recommendation is not the end serving point of your work. It should be a natural occurrence, natural occurrence. So it has got to be explicit. It is, you have to use action verbs and such as purchase, implement, explore like this and. Be dead. Recommendation, answer, what and now, why of it you know, that's what you investigated. What and now is, I I that is, it has currency value, now what you can do. Now what, I have done this, now what, you know, we say no, that's, that's, that's the stage. So that is, or now what means at present, what next is the future, now both you include in recommendations. I think that is enough for research conclusion, we will now move on to very interesting topic. Uh you know, the citations I would be talking about little later. Uh when, when, when that, when we talk the, uh what's called. Uh technical report, the the constituents and the ingredients that goes into a technical report. Because report cannot be having any other chapters what we have either to talk, you see, like results, it's same thing. Yeah, it could be in a little, uh I should say, do's and don't kind of a thing in an average manner. Report writing is that there is a structure and we talk about the structure there. But this is one thing which is extremely difficult to teach, this particular topic of research ethics. Is something very difficult, because it is an implied thing, it is an embedded thing, it is a latent thing, it is hidden. But it is a way of life, it's like, for example, if I say, uh say for example, one or Kamala. Kamala is a lady, you get that, uh the kind of some, some, some idea, mental idea about it. But what is the mental. Uh makeup of Kamala, we will not be knowing, you know, but research ethics is that. It is the mental makeup or the conduct or the character or. I should say the complete qualitative way of work of a researcher. Which is extremely important, see we are all researchers, but our work has a specific ethics. Every trade has ethics, every profession has ethics, so is our research, research is a pursuit, right? That's what we have embraced ourselves, we have approved, we have, we want to do that, we have set our minds. And we have set our hands and what should be, when we have set our minds, what should be our mindset, that is extremely important. When we want to do it, what should be our mindset? So in other words, we will be talking of, what is desire of ethics. This can be approached in two or three ways, what should not be our mindset also should be taught, is it not? Then we can evolve what what should be our mindset. So we will be discussing about what is called that. One conduct in a way, what is the misconduct? You see, even Vedas are written as neti, neti, not that, not that, not that, not. So when you differentially diagnose, differentiate or differentially or rule out certain things. What is actual thing will remain, is it not? What actual thing remain, if you want to do, you can have different approaches. Read directly what you should do and also know about what you should not do, both approaches as possible. So in research ethics, we have what is needed, what is the guide and guiding principles, mental, mental makeup of a researcher. And how he should conduct these research steps or research methodology. How he should behave, what should be his total persona, so this is what is actually research ethics. Why this is important, this is important, because this is also any, any creation. Is always. You have, you have created a work, you will have to enjoy, you did not create your work to. You you see voluntarily, if you feel fair enough, but it should not be stolen, you feel very bad. Stealing is the misconduct, whereas you sharing is the conduct, you understand, that is, that is the delineation. If you give the knowledge to somebody else, you are happy, the person who got is happy. But if the recipient steals your work, then you are unhappy. Did not ask me, I would have given you, you will tell, is it not? So that is the intent of, there is any profession, every profession, you know, has this research ethics. But actually what is the ethics, how, how, what is the meaning of ethics is extremely important. So as a prelude to going directly to the ethics tenets, let us understand. What is professionalism? Before that, we will see these three words, because every ethics immaterial, not necessarily from science. Whether it is medical ethics, research ethics, or it is business ethics, or it is social ethics, or. Any ethics for that matter. Centers around these three words, many people actually do not know. The differences between these three words, but there is a difference, they are implicit or explicit words. Many people even now, if I ask you, let us try asking somebody, anybody can define these things. Attempt defining this, what is a value, what is ethic and what is a moral? Are they same or they different? If it is different, let us understand how it is different without me telling about it. Please try, what is the value?
Sir, I will try, sir.
Please ma'am, please.
Value is a principle, sir.
Correct.
Which is, which we derive from the past or by ourselves, we have certain values. Like I am not going to tell lies, but this, I will not tell lies, comes from my past, means. My parents would have taught me, my teachers would have taught me, that is called value, sir.
Okay, okay, good attempt. Now what is ethics?
Ethics is some principles that we follow, in especially in our work life.
Work life, hmm.
And all that, so uh teaching us its own ethics.
Good. So we have some principle and we follow that. Principle follow, principle itself is a value, following it is ethics. Next, what is moral?
Moral is. Moral, I say that word moral, but I am not sure about what is moral to describe.
That was my intention madam, because we know it, not that we don't know, but we really do not know the difference actually, you know.
Yes, yes, yes.
Subtle difference, because they are so thick and thin related. We will always mistake, oh ethic, we call it as moral, moral, we call it as value, value, we call it, you know. So our, my intent here is to just understand in the real perspective, what are these three things. Now, if, if, if you ask me, value is something. Intrinsic. Appreciation, appreciation is accepting for good, you see if you say. If you take a hundred rupee or ten rupee note, the value of it is hundred no. Now, who has given that value? There is somebody. Authorizing that if you use this instrument, you will get a value of so much. Right? There is an authority, there is somebody giving, giving a kind of what is called, uh it's like a promissory note. It's a note, but there is a promise behind it, you see, note is physical, promise is mental. Promise is kind of embedded thing that nobody tells, it is a promise. It is a promise, if it is hundred paisa per rupee, that is a promise, there is, there is a value for that hundred paisa. Right? Somebody is giving a value for it. But it is little tough to understand in that particular language because it is always a kind of what is called. Uh, it is there, we can feel it, but we cannot express it. Now, if you want to express value, define value, it is simple. This is how it is defined, a value is a particular entity or a particular situation or a particular influence that helps you and helps other. That means if that particular influence entity or a small possession, if you have it, that is if you have a value, that means it will help you. And because it helps you, you are in a position to help others, right? See, that is a value. So how do you define a value? Value is one that I can possess, I can have it. And if I have it, it is helping me first and helping others as well. So in the whole of this chapter, I will use the sentence too much, helping you, helping others, helping you, helping others. Because you are subjective and you are, you are catering to somebody else as well. So a value is that particular entity which helps you, helps others. Now, let us take an example, can give, anybody can give an example for a value? I will also give you a clue, it is also qualitative in nature. Values are never be quantitative, values are always quantitative, qualitative. All your promissory notes, thousand rupees or two, they are all qualitative in nature, although number is there, number is the quantity. But it is the quality that matters because hundred rupee is more, having more quality than ten rupee, one rupee. Paisa, you know, that is how we add on quality, the quality is not delineated. Number is always delineated, delineated, that is the problem there, right? But it is always quantity as well as quality there. What we talk in value means it is full hundred percent quality. Now, quality is, say for example, it is easy to understand. So what is the guideline, what is the definition? That particular quality should help me, help others. Small example. Taking bath every day, taking bath every day is a value. Am I right?
Yes, sir.
Because it helps you. And definitely you are not spreading the disease to others, definitely you are not spreading to others, is it not? So it takes that away from you and because it takes that away from you. Others can also appreciate, others, other, you are doing, helping others also not getting that bad things. Coming on time is a value. Is it okay coming on time?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because coming on time never harms you, it can never harm anybody else also. Suppose you, you have assured yourself that you go at nine o'clock in the morning. So you are, you are present at nine o'clock in the morning, even if you are not present in that, you will explain why you have come late, for example. That is a value, that means you are a person who is having what is called, I should say, discipline. All the disciplines in the world which will help you and help others, the word discipline itself is helping. He, helping you first and helping others next are values. Not telling lies, had, wearing a haircut, wearing a pleasing dress. Be going, respecting elders, you, you following what you say. Uh, you know, what, what you preach, you know, all these are set of values, set of values. So value can be defined as that particular thing you would like to have and it, because that will help you. Why you should have? Because it will help you, does not harm you at all. In other words, it is the most unharbing thing. In fact, if you have the value, then there is an adjective quality given to you and that is called you are a good person, good design of, adjective quality. So it is, if you, if, if we say that is good, that means you have found some value in it. Which is helpful to you and helpful to anybody else, anybody else. So it is actually being good as a requisite to doing good, that is value, that is value. All consider this as important, to pursue and possess, does not harm self and others. Examples, happiness, punctuality, duty, loyalty, discipline, you can go on adding. And only definition is, only criteria is, you should possess it and if you possess it, it will help you. It will, it, it will, it will make your life happy, you will be happy. And finally, you will be good, you will be good. Now, why you should be good, we will discuss little later. But the definition of value here is that. Now, ethics is little graduation of values. Consistently considered as right manner, that is possible only when, when you have a, having value, set of values. In other words, if you do not have values, you can't be ethical. Please understand, if you do not possess values and you cannot be ethical and there is no need to possess all the values, one is linked to the other. One is generally, if you have one good characteristic of coming on time, you know, happiness comes to you. You will be called punctual, you will be more dutiful, duty gives loyalty. And it will become a way of life as a disciplinary, you know, all the characters are there. In, in other words, this is actually philosophy of religion. There is no need that you should worship thirty-three thousand crore, crores of gods. Have one and all others are linked there, all others are linked there, this is as philosophical as I say. So value is practice one with all sincerity and fullness. No doubt in that because it is needed for you to be happy, to be you know, value, to be a valued person. So this, when it is a consistent thing, that is you will always follow what values you have, then you know you are practicing what is called ethics. Considered always a right manner, nobody says it is wrong. Nobody says it is wrong because nobody, it does not, it is because it is not harming, that is as simple as it, it is not harming. Consistently considered as right manner and it is an internal codification. This is a very important thing, our computer science people will understand what a code is. Code is nothing but a concrete step-by-step things and hundred percent for no jumping steps, right? So codification is continuously taking one, one of the value system or a value and practicing it for consistently, persistently till, you know? You, you, that particular concept or value becomes internalized, solidified. Becomes a part of your, what should I say, conduct, part of your work. In other words, it is, it, it gets into what's called that brain area where any other thing you will not appreciate, you will have to do only that, you know, that is, that is what is called codification. So ethics is nothing but putting values consistently on practice, on practice. So it is internal codification that continuous practicing becomes a behavior. And you know, there is always a character built here. See, in colleges, people ask character certificate. It is impossible to character certificate, conduct certificate we can give because conduct is one, how you have conducted with the value system that you have when you were in that particular institute. I will not be watchful, I will not be giving a vouching thing forever for you, so I cannot give you a character certificate. But I can give you a conduct certificate and character certificate is always given by yourself. Pacing on how far you have conducted, how well you have conducted, how persistently you have conducted your value system. That is what is called ethics. Ethics is, you acquire goodness in, uh, in values and you extend goodness in ethics. That is what is called, ethics is always a practice thing, that is why it comes as a prerequisite of professionalism. I will talk about professional thing little later, but it, it is ethics. Ethics is codification, internal codification of the value system that you have. The last one is morals. Moral is always, you see, when everything is consolidated, like a value is consolidated into a code. And that code has become a law, then it is moral. Law means what? That is the right path to trade, that is the correct way to go, that is conformity to law. So they are linked, but they are different, please understand, these three words I take lot of time to explain because unless this is understood, professional practice, professional ethic cannot come. In fact, there is a full paper for you which, you know, we can talk about values itself for about three, four hours uh, in that particular, uh, this, so, but my intention here is to understand as a, as a, as a novice, what is value, what is ethics, what is moral? Now, other point that you should consider here is, while value is generally, generally subjective. That means these values you should have as an individual, everybody should have as individuals. Because everybody can be good, things could be good, doesn't harm anybody. But ethics and morals, both personal level you can practice and some institutional also can be ethical. So institutions will have some kind of what is called mandates and these mandates are the thing that we will decide whether they are ethical in nature or not, you know? So ethics can be subjective, can be institutional. Morals could be subjective, could be institutional, right? So while values are more of subjective, ethics and morals can be both subjective and object. Institutionally. That is the real meaning of what is called these three very important words when we learn about ethics. So morals is an end product of having values and believing in them and practicing them. So ethics plus values make morals. Core principles, underlying principles, like why we should have it, it will answer. Do no harm. Here again, please understand ladies and gentlemen, do no harm means it is not for others. It is others as well as for yourself, you cannot harm yourself, you have no right to harm yourself, please remember. By law, suicide is a culpable act, although you are killing yourself. If you, if you are, by law, if you kill yourself, if you are, if you are successful, you go to heaven or hell. But if you live, you will definitely go to jail, you know? You, and a suicide attempt, if it ends in death. You know, you can't, you can't be punished because you have punished yourself. But if you live, you will be punished by law, that is culpable act, by law it is not correct. You know why? Can somebody give an answer for this? Why suicide is a culpable act? Anybody? Please think and answer, it's very interesting.
Uh, sir?
Yes, madam.
Uh, I, I, I think by constitution, uh, every human being, uh, uh, every human being um, has a right to leave.
Very good, correct. What's your name, madam?
Uh, I am Asha, sir.
Asha, madam. Are you really Asha?
Yes, sir, I think so.
No, that is the name given by your parents, it is not the name that you, you, you have. Am I correct, madam? Asha, madam? Hello?
Ah, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Because it is not you, you know, there is a reason, somebody else has given the life to you, you did not create yourself. Am I right?
Yes, sir.
So when you, you are, you as a property is somebody else's, you don't have right to kill yourself. Are you kidding me? That is the logic in suicide, madam? Because the life was not created by you, right? So the logic here is when you are a property of somebody else. But somebody else have the right to take life or give life. They have a better right, they are in a better position than yourself, the law says so. So, no, do, do no harm means, it is very, very important here that you cannot self-blame. You cannot indulge in self, uh, what should they abuse? You could cannot, because it is not, all our body parts is not ours. Please understand, somebody else has given, maybe our children we might have given, but it is not as, my name is Krishnamurti, but it is not my name, it is not me, somebody else gave me that. That is the hard reality, madam, so, do no harm means in that philosophical F. You should not harm at the mental level, you can never think of harming anybody, that is what is do no harm. Informed consent in research, extremely important is, if you take, especially in social research when you will be talking of only, uh, human beings as sample. You will have to tell why you have sampled them, especially that particular group to, with whom you will investigate, when sampling comes, we will be talking of it little later. But informed consent is if you want to interact with them even for answering a question or a questionnaire or a survey, you will have to inform what is your intent. You will have to obtain their consent, that is called informed consent, especially in clinical studies, it is very, very mandatory. Otherwise, even for, even if it is an illiterate person, you need to see that your intents or your intention of intervening or interacting or discussing with the sample, with your human subject sample have got to be done, if it is human beings, right? If it is animal beings, the owner of that particular or the person who had, who is the perpetrator of that should consent. Uh, should give consent. So informed consent means extremely important, extremely important. That is core of core, core principle. Potential anonymity, so whenever you deal with human beings. Anonymity, confidential, confidentiality, because there is a contract unwritten between you and that particular subject. So anonymity has got to be maintained, although you derive lot of results from that. But you will never be speaking of the subjective, uh, addressal there. But it will be an objective finding, uh, you know, uh, that will come out in experiments. So never, unless it is a case history which also becomes confidential, but there is a different ethics, code of ethics for that. Confidentiality, anonymity, taking consent and doing no harm are the core principles of ethics. I will complete this characteristics, there are five sets of characters, uh, characteristics. We'll discuss and call it a day today and we can continue it little later. Characteristics of professionalism. Please understand the word profession, we call profession for a reason. The first and the foremost reason why we should call any pursuit, any, any employment can be professional. But there are certain things which are unprofessional also, there are certain areas where, where, which is unprofessional. Right? For example, the relationship between a wife and husband need not be professional. Although it could be, they, they, they could be, each, each of them could be a professional in their spheres. But when they come to the family, that professionalism will not be practiced, you know, that is how the marriage contract works, works out. But then we should understand what is this professionalism. First and the foremost condition of professionalism is, who is a professional means? A professional is a basic learner and learner for the life. A professional will never, can never retire, please remember, there is no retirement. Why? Because he is wedded or he has decided to be a learner. And he learns forever for the last breath. That is why we call some people out of so many employments as professional things, we call medical professional. Engineering professional, law professional, right? We call medical professional, engineering professional, law professional, right? We don't call teaching as professional. Teaching is, because you can't learn, a teacher has to learn, that is there. As a, as a professionalism, it is okay, but teacher has to retire, a clerk has to retire. You know, because there is a kind of what is called conventional, conventionalism coming that after certain age you cannot practice what you are doing it, you can't do that. Whereas a medical professional can practice even after retirement. Right? A law practitioner can practice till the end. A chartered accountant can do a professional, professional even at the end. So anything, if teaching if you want to do till your end, then teaching has becomes a professionalism. So anything can become professionalism provided you learn and keep on learning, keep on learning. And that is the reason why we use another word as professional practice. The word practice is attached only to professions, please understand. Practice means what? It's a great word. Practice means the first tenant, what is understood in the word practice means that you are not perfect. In other words, you are always a probation, you will learn, you will learn, keep on learning. Learning is the prime motive of a professional. That is why we call it as practice and this practice we don't attach to so many other professionals. For example, cooking, we don't call it as a practice. Although it is a professional thing, if he goes on cooking till the end of the life and learn cooking and do kind of what is called intensive research and other things, he cannot be a professional. So there is a conventional meaning of professional professionalism. He has to learn, keep on learning and no perfect because it humbles you down. That is that, there is nothing like a perfect cook, there is nothing like a perfect medical doctor. There is nothing like, there is no perfection at all here. So that is why we call it as, a professional has to learn, learn forever, professional practice. So some employment, some kind of what is called pursuits, they really are in the spirit and letter they are practicing. It is involved practicing, it is necessary to practice because every disease is a challenge. It can be fever, but fever could be infinite number, infinite number. So he has to, his, his way itself is to going on learning, going on exposing, going on, on getting answers, going on doing, uh, practice. So that is what is called professionalism. Now, there are five characteristics of, that is these characteristics if one have, there is no need of any pursuit, that particular person is a professional. First characteristic is what is called theoretical. A theory is nothing but what he perceives mentally and what he gets. The vibes through his ears are same. That is, he, what he, what he hears and what he listens. Listening is a product of hearing, please understand. Listening is at a higher, uh, sta- higher level than hearing. So both perception, that is feeling or experience is congruent to hearing, that is what is called theoretical. So he hears, he listens and you know, there is perfect congruence, perfect acceptance, perfect appreciation. That is theoretical nature. Critical thinker. Right? There is no confusion, he, that means he listens only what he perceives or whatever he perceives, he listens, you know, that's how it comes. So hearing and perception is that. Critical thinking is, he, here there is no hearing to listen. It is only the filtered points what he heard or filtered points are nothing but churned points, that is acceptable points. So there is a kind of what is called filtering, kind of processing and such, in other words, skeptic, a person who hears will be having doubt and gets the answer for it, that quality is called critical. Criticality is nothing but you will agree only after testing, only after some convincing. He who inquests, that is who investigates and says yes or no. Nothing, just because he is somebody great person is talking, you take it quantitatively. So this is another characteristic of a professional. Run by logic, rational contributes to knowledge. So there is a scientific process here happening and then agreeing. He believes and appreciates research and development. Research is nothing but theoretical, please understand, theoretical is not, see, theory springs out of uh, that, the findings that goes in the mill, you see, the experiment is only the mill. But what floor comes out is actually theory, that what product comes out is the theory. So that is what is meant by, see, many people misunderstand, theory is different, practical is different. No, practical is the sadhana for end product theory, please understand. Right? Practical thing demonstrates defense or consolidates a particular thing. So practical thing is a tool that can never be the endpoint, practical can never be endpoint. It is those, like I tell a story but I give an example. That example is practical, right? Practical is example because you can touch, feel, observe, understand the principle. But principle is there, no, that is actually the theory. So theory is a churned out point, distillate of so many things in the mill of experiment, please understand. That is what is professionalism, he is a professional. He believes that only that mill, in milling is needed to arrive at certain endpoint, certain distillate, certain concrete things and I believe that, so that is, that becomes his ingrained character. So theoretical means these are the connotations. Many people even now know that is just theory. These are all people who are not deep thinkers, you know, they don't know the meaning of the theory at all there. So it's very theoretical because in India we try, try to give some kind of miscultural values, you know. We fix some bad value to some things and we feel that it is the correct thing. Many people say it is theoretical in nature, there is nothing like theoretical. If it is only experimented and what is called out, only theory comes, right? So theory is to be valued, theory is that extrapolation work, that generalization work out of a small instance, that is what is one experiment. So theoretical is extremely important and professional is that kind of a person who believes in theory. Next one is commitment. How do you define commitment? Anybody, please try, what is commitment?
Uh, is it dedication, sir?
One. How it is different from duty, madam? One is the word duty, the other word is the commitment. Are the same?
Uh, commitment in the long run becomes a duty, I feel.
No, no, you see the third point here. It is not bound by the time. Let me give you a small example. I am a teacher working in Dhanan Sagar University. I have certain duties to perform. One of my, one of the prerequisite duty is that I have got to be physically present at nine, nine, morning nine o'clock when the duty commences and evening five o'clock when the duty closes. That means from morning nine to evening five o'clock, physically I should be present and do certain tasks that has been assigned to me. So in duties, there are three things, one, there is a time frame, there is a task frame, there is a wage frame, wage, I will be paid wages if I am you know, fulfilling that duty, duty is always a given task. Duty, be dutiful means what? Be dutiful means do your task as given, as assigned, as per contract, that is what is called duty. For which you will be compensated by wage or salary. So it is duty, but commitment is little, you know, if duty is BSc, commitment is PhD. If for PhD, you know, there is no time. There are certain duties or tasks during nine to five I can't do. For example, let me say today I had to evaluate hundred sixteen answer scripts. I had to do it today. But I could finish up to save for example hundred with all difficulty from morning to evening, very tough. This was the third day, so very tough. Today I had to finish, that is the, tomorrow I have to give my evaluation report. So today I had to finish, but five o'clock I have finished only, you know, some sixteen papers are remaining, hundred I could finish. Now, if I mind only my duty, I have completed five o'clock, I have to go, I will be paid salary for that. But I continue because I have to complete the task which I have myself put. I decided in the morning I should complete hundred and sixteen today, but I have reached only hundred. That sixteen is remaining but the time is up, official time is up, duty time is up. That what I do for sixteen scripts spending time is what is called commitment. That means a committed person will not mind the duty hours. So it is called beyond the duty, that is what is called committed and all professionals are committed, they have got to be committed. You expect the operation has to go from morning nine to twelve, but sometimes you do not know, for variety of reasons, it can be extended. He cannot leave it in the half, he has to complete it, he has to complete it, that is the norm there. So a professional is duty-bound first, professional, you know, comes, comes, uh, as, as, as a mandate. So he himself puts, uh, for that sixteen papers I may not be given money because I have worked more than uh, uh, evening, uh, five o'clock. I, I can, the task has taken the time, the task is extended. So generally it happens, so in professional work you don't mind or you don't give prime importance to only the duty, it is a duty plus some finishing the task, completing the task in all its fairness, in all its fair. Not praise or, you know, criticism, detters this particular person, a committed, I mean, a, a, a commitment, committed person. He identifies with the profession, profession gives him the joy, the professional satisfaction. So he will do that and he will definitely do continuous evaluation of what he has done. It's called strength, weakness, opportunity and challenge analysis. That T is gone away now, nowadays it is called SWAC. Previously it was called SWAT, now it is SWAC analysis. It is important that he evaluates, he evaluates himself and you know, gives a small kind of certificate or a, or a punishment. He can punish himself, he can praise himself, you know, that, that is happens on a continual basis, on a continual basis. So in other words, he will be a person who instructs himself to follow a particular path, that is what is commitment. So instruction, but it is self-instruction. Appraisal, but it is self-appraisal. Task listing, but it is self-task listing. Duty, but it is commitment. So this is how, what is meant by the second set of, second basic characteristic of a professional. And please mind you, researchers are all professionals. Research itself is a profession, all researchers, you are all going to be professionals. It is the, the endpoint could be so many things, incidental benefits can be so many things, you know. But finally you are all professionals, you become professionals. You are an intellectual, there is a basic kind of what is called, knowledge is available to you as a resource. You, you, all are, all of you are resources, you believe in knowledge and you believe in current value, updating the knowledge. A professional first gets the knowledge from somebody else's, updates it, that is important. See, any, uh, uh, you see, chalavane illada nanya aga paradu, bari nanya is not good, but it should be having currency. It should have, it should be sellable, it should be kind of what is called having a value, intrinsic value. So that is what is called currency. Current knowledge is extremely important. You have, you have, and this currency is like a river, unending, you know. So you should go on acquiring, updating the knowledge, uh, what you gained and what you are going to gain. So that is why it is a lifelong, continuous, infinitum learning. Brothers, it bothers always the self-learning for improvement. Largely you are a guide to yourself, largely you are a teacher for yourself, so self-learning, self-appraisal. Current interests, currency as of now, today, present, but little future. If it is farther future, you are more dynamic, you are more pragmatic, you are more proactive. So current interests are important, proactivity is also important. Develops and performs and evaluates, that is SWOT analysis, he develops, performs, evaluates the performance. In other words, an intellectual person will be in the system, but he will also work on the system. Working in the system is important, following rules, regulations is duty, but working on the system also is important, that means you create an environment. You never crib that the environment here is bad, so I cannot perform, that is not the characteristic of a professional. So you will work on the system so that you can be in the system forever, that is what is intellectual, intellectual behavior. Altruistic, very, very noble characteristic. And it's a reality, hard reality, but we don't accept, that's the problem. Alterism is, we have got to be selfless and we are selfless in, in argument. In, 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 not necessarily argument, in reality as well. Which gives yourself positive mental attitude and automatically creates a circle of influence and you will be influential. This is what increases the influence of a person. Please understand, an ethical professional need not go anywhere, many people go to him. Why? Because he is selfless, many people are convinced that this fellow is not a chick. This fellow, he doesn't steal anything from anybody else, but he is a person who gives. That is what is called selfless, giving more than what you get is selfless, altruistic. That's what we do, but then we, we do it in a kind of what's called factional thing. For example, let me give you an example. All of you have some salaries, say for example, X has a salary of thirty thousand rupees. That X will spend all, all thirty thousand rupees with the lot penny to himself? What is the reality? No, he will not send, spend all the entire thirty thousand rupees for himself. Perhaps majority, ninety percent of you, you know, you will spend seventy-five percent of your earning on others. It is only twenty, twenty-five percent or even sometimes five percent of your complete earning is on you. Is it not? So you are an altruistic person. In reality, we are, we are all selfless. Right? So, but then there are so many other corollaries which will not let us, which prevents you to be altruistic. Uh, you know, like for example, negative characteristics like greed, like snatching, like robbing, like depriving opportunities for others, although you got your opportunity, you know. That negative things will go away, in altruistic, there is no shadow of negativism. That is why you gain what is called positivism, positive mental attitude. When you get this selfless as the basic criteria, please remember Mahatma Gandhi was selfless so he could face a completely armed, completely disciplined, most strong military of the world. He did not have a, even a, even, even a clad, uh, what I should say clothes. How you can become influential? It is this characteristic of selflessness gives you that strength, it is not the muscle strength. Please remember, it is the positive mental attitude strength. So giving to others than getting only that much that is needed for your survival makes you influential. If you want to be influential, please understand, this is the sutra. No, naan maath kedaala, ya kedaala? Why? There is something wrong in you. You see, that you should identify, that best thing to identify is yourself. Many teachers say, I cannot control the class, these people are bad. Easy to tell to somebody else, but you put reflection to that, you also did not listen. When you were a student, you also created nice, right? How to create that particular environment? How to be selfless is the most important pursuit and that is in, in professionalism. How to be selfless is the most important pursuit and that is in professionalism, it has got to be there. If you want to be influential business person, this is, there is no other way except to be selfless. People feel amassing wealth is okay, yeah, we are all amassing wealth. But we are not spending all the wealth for us, then we are selfish, right? So selfless characteristic is the basic root cause for influence, for influence. And altruism is total characteristic of this selflessness, positive mental attitude, respecting others. One comes out of the other, altruistic, professional is always an altruistic person. And the last characteristic is that is responsible, he does his duty with commitment. He does his duty as if it is, in other words, owning what you do. And owning what you do is not necessarily always good you do, what you bad to do is more important. First of all, prevent bad, anticipate that you should not do good, so practice standard operating procedures. So that you will do less mistakes and even if that mistakes are there, if they are cognizable, they are correctable. So responsibility is that, doing the work, owning the work and being accountable for whatever that you do. That is all what is called responsible, promises what he deliver, delivers, saying no without guilt. Extremely difficult quality, extremely difficult because everybody wants to please everybody here. Especially boss pleasing is a menace and a big disease. Psychofancy is a big disease of not only persons here but also many institutes. There is no limit for psychofancy, psychophants are those people, you should be very careful. You know, kanaadhal padachanangai thare, obuladu, kedu dikkay, baiyadu valladikkayanta. Baiyadu, baiyadu, baiyadu always badhko kentha. So why there is importance here, important assertion, assertion is important is, many things we can't do, we know we can't do. But we don't want to say we can't do. That itself is non-transparent, if you cannot do it, say you cannot do it for one, two, three. You don't know, okay, I don't know, at that point in time I will develop and do it. That assertion is, no, you can't take leave. Suppose a person comes and asks leave, don't be, if, if there is a solid reason that you can deny, leave, deny it. Convince, if you don't do this today, who will be harmed, it is you who will be harmed, your load will be burnt tomorrow. So some certain things in administration becomes extremely difficult. You, you should never have the sutra of kind of what is called pleasing everybody. Because it is impossible to please yourself also. So when it is an impossibility, never kind of what is called be having a dual mentality, a dual characteristic. Paronia in your mind, say no without feeling difficulty, without feeling the guilt aspect of it. Assertion, that is also responsibility. Only people who estimate the time, they can tell I can do it in two, two days. Even the two days with lot of uncertainty, some it can spill out to two and a half days. But you don't mind staying that are not getting salary for half a day because you have committed and told that it is only two days, that is called assertion. Assertion is estimate, be sure and commit, that is, that is what is called assertion. And if it is not possible, tell it is not possible and possibly give reasons. You should not hurt, assertion is not the intention of hurting anybody that say no. In fact, if anybody gives the task, always tell yes even if it is difficult and tell, yes I told. But these are all the difficulties, you can always see. So that is called little, that is always accepted, if you say no, it is hurting, that is not assertion. You can't hurt but you have to convince, so that is a kind of assertion. Think and act, mental thing first, action later, looking first, leaping later, right? And timely delivery. So these are in gist five characteristic of a professional and ethics demands that you have got to be professional. The word ethics means automatically you are a professional. This professional ethics means not the duty or researcher ethic. This is any work that you do, if you have this, that itself is what is called professionalism. If you practice this, it is professionalism. We will talk about this, you know, there is a small five, ten minutes discussion in the next class. Intellectual property right, which is a spin-off benefit by being ethical. So we will understand the relationship between this in the next class. In the next class, I will be completing this discussion on, on research ethics. And also more importantly, the last part what is called misconduct in research. Here we are, what we are discussing right now is the conduct of research. But what we have to know is the misconduct in research and that is easy to learn. We will see what are those misconducts that generally we are tending, we, we tend to do. We, which, which, which deviates our path and we will be out of our rail. We will understand what are those thing in our profession, research profession that we can do bad. So that bad things are also, we will, we are aware so that we can prevent becoming or succumbing victims to that misconduct. That we will talk in the next. I hope I will stop at this today, but I have some few announcements to make. The first and the foremost announcement is the sampling design which I am going to take up after this research ethics is a small sub-chapter. It, it comes in soon after the research design. But I wanted you to get conversant with the research designs so that apparently sampling design we can talk. Because on sampling design involves a small kind of exercises, small exercises. So I have, I will be giving you theoretical inputs, but actual working out problems I am asking one of my PhD students to talk to you. She will be able to, it is Vani Shri R, she will be talking about what is called testing of hypothesis. And also working out certain small, small problems on say for example cluster sampling, random sampling. Attified sampling and see a complex non-probability sampling. It will be just a one session, one and a half hour session for introduction. It is not at all difficult but then it gives a complete entirety for sampling design. And one, one, one more session, two sessions will be sampling design. One by my student, PhD, not student, she has done already PhD, completed a PhD. She is good, so I have asked, requested her to talk to you, just to give, cut the monotony, me telling every time. This next class, you know, once I finish, this will, this I will take only half an hour. The next class, subsequent class session will be a subject seminar. Subject seminar, subject seminar is the first aspect of sampling design. I will give the notes, I will train two of you, one lady candidate, one gent candidate, we will identify next session. And give you notes, give you and ask you to make slides. They will have to meet me, they will train, they will get training and I am not going to talk. She or she who is identified will teach, will take and will teach the entire other class. So it's a subject seminar mode and it is a very good way of, you know, understanding things. So I want two names for that today, is it possible volunteering?
Sir, myself, Anand Kumar.
Anantakumar?
Anand Kumar, Keshilaj, myself.
Anandakumar.
Sir, I'll take up.
Kesro? Name please.
Kavita.
Kavita, oh wonderful. So Anand Kumar and Kavita, I will be sending a capsule of what you should read first, okay? Understand first and ask thousand questions to me.
Okay sir.
Okay, you may, you read and make questions and we will either together of you on one convenient date. We will, I will be in touch with you by email. You will come to me and we, I will prepare you and you will prepare your own slides and talk, talk. Each one of you will talk, for example, it may be about twenty to twenty-five minutes, not more than twenty minutes, let us say. So one hour, I think both of you can finish that particular topic, you know. That will be a very good way of learning and it will be a very good way of, you know, understanding. Especially people who have volunteered, no, it did, that will not go away at all in your life, you know, I am, I assure you. Many courses which I make outside, outside, it's only in India I talk more. When I go, whenever I, see this particular research methodology, I keep on talking at the world level, you know. I will not talk at all there, I will be doing this only, I will help people to talk. And they will talk and as an expert, the important highlight points only I will talk. That is the modus operandi, that's what Europe and Americas appreciate. But in India, people think, you know, classroom teaching, teacher should be training more than the student. But it is the other way actually, the student has to strain more than the teacher. Teacher is like a facilitator or a guide. Nevertheless, we have gone through our mode, we will try to see how subject seminar will be. Whether it will be effective or not little later, but let us see. I am sure it is, it will be effective and I will help you, help both of you. And I want you to please post your, Kavita I know, Anand Kumar, please post your email to me. You have my email address?
Yes sir, I have your email address.
Yes sir, I have your email address.
Yeah, then it is fine, then it is, then it's fine and do it as fast as you can. Maybe tomorrow itself I will be sending the material and you can read through.
Yes, I was to write all, just, just say hello and send it sir, one mail.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes, thank you.
So that is subject seminar. The test of hypothesis and sampling designs will be taught by one of my good student, R. Vani Shri. She will be having the, not next session but forthcoming, the third session. And I think that will end our discussion on this particular coursework. And I will give you a lot of opportunities if you want anything to be revisited. Please let me know, we can revise it, we can, we can, any number of times we can talk. And regarding the communication, the technical communication also, I may take about one hour. And tell you about some inputs about writing tips, writing tips. Thank you, thank you for your patient visiting, if you have any questions, please.
Yes sir, I have a question, couple of questions sir.
Please, 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 please.
Sir, you talked about theory, theoretical background in research, right? Sir, when we are using a theory in the research or a thesis report. The particular theory will have its own limitations. But still we use the same theory and then followed by another theory and so on and so forth. How do we understand if the, if a particular theory has limitations or disadvantages? That we, if it is not applicable to these, these situations, then how do we understand that? And why do we still use it or back it up for a particular research?
No, please understand, theory gives you what is called Tatwa. The, the actual, actual meaning of theory is the principle. Now, now, if for an example, if I say, say gravitational theory, right? If I use this gravitational theory to, you see generally we class, conventionally we class gravity in physics, alva madam. But that particular Tatwa is applicable to biology. Now what is Tatwa? Gravitation as a principle is the pulling thing, not the falling thing, that's the Tatwa.
Okay.
Are you getting me madam?
Yes sir.
It is a pulling thing, the gravitation is underlying, the, madam, I think your mic has to be little, micsalpa durayadi, ela mute markpode. Reflection batai, yeah, it's fine. So gravitation, you know, is something embedded inside the earth layer which pulls all the bodies towards it. That is only the Tatwa. But to get it, you know, one person less spent all his life. But application need not be for the only physics, please understand. For example, if you want to walk down, if the want, if the blood has to flow in the, in, in the veins and arteries, gravity is essential. Living on earth is only because atmosphere or the earth has gravity and gravity is prerequisite. Now, now you tell me how it is not applicable, how theory is not, how this principle of theory is not applicable to other than physics? That's a false thing, no, it is applicable everywhere, then only we call that as theory. You know, like that, similar to gravity, there will be so many other concepts, other principles. Only thing is that, how we have to relate is actual knowing of the things and where the scholarly things come, where the learning happens. If we cannot say that this is not applicable, please check doubly, triply four times whether it is not applicable. If it is not applicable, give reasons why it is not applicable, then you can embrace some other theory, some other theory. So before telling this theory doesn't apply here, you should give valid reasons why it is not applying. And what is that very closely applicable theory? Because there is no other, no, no experiment, no finding without basic, basing on these principles, basing on these principles. Understanding principles are tough, linking the occurring to the principle itself is tough, that process itself is actually the research. Have I answered you? It gives, now the straight answer is dwell telling that this theory is not applicable to this. You have answered the question itself, by asking that question you have answered. That means which other theory will apply to this, you should explore, no? You should explore, you can't say nothing is applicable. If the, because the happening you are seeing, it is happening and continuously you are observing, that means there is some theory behind it. It might not have been discovered, it might have been understood very less, but the act is happening. That is where the research comes madam, how it happens, we should understand. Many people do not know that the river flows because of the gradients in the earth. Because that is not seen, principles are like that, gradients on the earth means ups and downs in the earth. And finally there is always a top, there is always a bottom and gravity makes everything to flow from top to bottom. Or in other words, the bottom always pulls the top, right? So there is always an embedded thing and that it needs before making the judgment that this theory is not applicable. Two mistakes you might have done, one, you have chosen a wrong theory. Second, you have chosen an antithesis, antithesis means just opposite of it. And once you get hold of what is guiding that, then you can say that this theory was not applicable because, and this theory is applicable, you got the answer also. If you can, give me some classic example, then I will be able to tell madam.
Okay sir, fine sir. Secondly, you talked about altruism, right sir?
Yes ma'am.
How is it applicable in research?
Now, I told you, it is a characteristic of a professional. And research is a professional, research is always a practicing thing. Now tell me, a tree, just a small tree, is it altruistic in nature? It's an inanimate thing, now what I am talking is very simple, what you should develop, as a human being I am talking. Now tell me, take a inanimate, for example, of course, tree also has life but it is not human being, it's an, it's an, it's a biotic thing but not human. Is it altruistic from your angle?
Yes sir.
How?
It gives fruits and other things to people and.
No, the hardest fact is, hardest fact is, it gives shade to enemies. It gives shades to people who cut it.
Yeah.
Are you getting me now altruism in men's minds? That means it is so selfish, so selfless fellow that even if you cut it, it does. That means it is so selfish, so selfless fellow that even if you cut it, it does its duty of giving the shade. That is what is called altruism. Altruism is always ingrained, it's a natural quality. We have to recognize, appreciate and make it our own, we have to rekindle and invoke in us, that's all. So a researcher is, is a person who creates a particular theme and shares it to everybody. Incidentally, he gets a benefit of his life or he wages that's all. Because his interest is to serve society, his interest is to give something to somebody else, even sometimes he starts. That is what is called professionalism. In professional thing, there is nothing like, it's a profit, madam, actually, profit is a very good word. What is profit? Profit is not cheating, but we have given the word cheating, at least put your reactivity or the ingredients cheap and make the product very costly, that is unethical actually. See, altruism means be selfless. You are capable of earning certain things, you are capable of doing something good. Hundred percent you, you are good, but share that goodness. That is what is the intent of, that is the reason why I say all the researchers have to publish. It is their duty, they can't, if you don't publish your article, then you are not altruistic. Because you want to keep what you have learned. In fact, that is the great danger that our Ayurveda has done to us. You know, what they did for a purpose that it should not be stolen because IPR was not there at that point in time, right? But in reality, it is sharing only that sustains, not stealing. Stealing is only a small greedy thing or a negative thing that drives you to do that. And antithesis of that is what is called altruistic. Altruism, for me, it is directly makes you influential, it directly makes you influential. If you say that you are not having influence, that is, there is something wrong in you, everybody can be influential. Yes.
One last question, sir. When you said principles of ethics, I am, I am seeing the next level of principles of ethics is spirituality, is that so?
Well, absolutely, religion, spirituality, everything, you know? How do you define, many people misunderstand the word spirituality, madam, they don't want to use it, I am so happy that I have used it. You, you know the definition of health, madam? WHO definition, I am not talking any other thing.
Okay, no, sir, I don't know.
What's your name, madam?
I am Asha, sir.
Asha, madam, please understand, WHO defines health is well-being physically, mentally, socially. Till ten years back, these are the only three things. Now they have added spiritually. If you are not well-being spiritually, you are not having health. That is what WHO defines, madam. So we don't know actually the real meaning of spirituality, they have understood very clearly that spirituality gives you health. And because it was not added, mental health problems have increased.
Right. Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, please continue, sir, sorry.
So it is, it is having the equal, equal importance as your physical. We, see health means we always say, I was having running nose, now, now, now my running nose is stopped, so I am health. That is not, it's only a partly true. There are so many things which are different layers, deeper layers. Alva, annamaya poja, manomaya poja, manomaya poja is the thing which is real, real problem. People could not understand, did not give importance, so lot of that problems are coming up. Although now, physical problems are easily, or I should say, are largely manageable. Mental problems are still difficult because even we have understood only five percent of the brain. Even now, in the twenty-first or twenty-second century, we have understood only that much. The potential has to be understood, so there is only people like all of you who do research, you know, on, pointed research on mental health, possibly we can attack mental health also. Yes.
Sir, Anand Kumar, you have email.
Yes, yes, Anand Kumar, I will give you the, I will send it tomorrow for both of you. You start reading it and then I will have a subject seminar, maybe next session or, or a success.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you. Is there any other question? This is the class I wanted face-to-face, but unfortunately days are so bad. I hoped it will be good, but it is becoming bad day by day. We could not meet this ethics and this one, if I, if I talk, we are face-to-face, it will be both good. But unfortunately, there is no possibility. All right then, thank you, good night, good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.